I'll call the City Council Work Session of October 7, 2020 to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Chafer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
And David Gleason.
I'm here.
That's everyone.
Okay, tonight's work session topic is "A New Vision for EVOs," a presentation. And we have Rachel Kalander on line. And Rachel, I'll turn it over to you and let you just reintroduce the team. I heard some more people call in.
Fantastic. Thank you so much there. And council members, it's a pleasure to be speaking with you. I'm here in Anchorage, but to be honest, I really wish I was back in my hometown. So I can share with you in spirit tonight. Thank you for having us for this presentation. I am going to turn the mic over to some of our think tank members, but quickly wanted to introduce those who are presenting tonight. First, it will be Marilyn Leal, who has lived in Cordoba, which previous executive director of Cordoba District Fisherman United, and a founding member, a deputy director of the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council. DeTredwell, who was, as many of you know, very involved in the inception of the Prince William Sound Science Center and former Alaska Lieutenant Governor. Cherry Beretta, Miss Longhaim, Chair of the board of Chu Dash Alaska Corporation, and current Navy interim CEO. And Diane Chaplin, who is CEO of the Rastusen Foundation. So I'll turn it over first to Marilyn. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. And I also want to thank the council for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about what we've been working on, and proposals of the inclusion management of the oil spill trust fund. I believe you all have an information packet that should have been sent out to you, so if you go to page one. The first what I wanted to do is several of you, and I know several of you, and you know me, but there are a few of you who can tell us a little bit more about my background. As Rachel said, I was the CDFU Executive Director when the oil spill happened. And in doing that job, I ended up being one of the columnists of the Prince William Sound RCAC. I was also a charter member of the Oil Spill Recovery Institute at the Science Center. When I fled Cordoba in 1992, I was to go on to a temporary assignment with the Coast Guard of Washington, D.C., where I was helping them write regulations to implement the oil pollution act. And then when I returned from Washington, D.C., I became Deputy Director of the RCAC, and that's when I moved to Anchorage. So I do call myself a former Cordovan, but I think once you're a Cordovan, you're home as a Cordovan, and I still have very strong connections with Cordova. So I just want to tell you a little bit why I got involved with this. When the think tank was being formed, I joined with a group of these people who had been pretty involved with the oil spill, and we were concerned about future of particularly the oil spill trust fund. So we got over a period of several months to come up with ideas on how we thought it could be better managed. We were understanding that the plan was to spend the trust fund down, and then it would just end, and we didn't think that that was good. We wanted to create something that would be permanent. So our priorities were to honor the original purpose of the oil spill settlement for research and habitat acquisitions, to ensure the fund benefits to the oil spill regions and researchers, rather than outside interest, and we were finding that a lot of the money that was being used in the trust fund wasn't going outside, and we wanted it to stay in Alaska and particularly in the spill-impacted region. So we also wanted to work on bringing the administrative costs down and to continue the fund commitments that already had been made. So with that, I'm going to do, turn it over to Diane Chaplin for the Rastusen Foundation. Nice to also want to say thank you to Diane. She and her staff have been very helpful to our think tank group, and I don't think we couldn't have done it without them. So I'll turn it over to Diane.
All right, thank you, Marilyn. And again, Mr. Mayor and council members, we appreciate this opportunity to talk with you. I'm a 37-year resident of Alaska who came for two years to run the public radio network. So at the time of the spill, I was actually president of ATRN, and had visited Cordoba for the first time when we were planning the first public radio service for Prince William Sound. And I have to say, we went to Valdez first, and then to Cordoba, and then my question to Dave Hammack was, why are we building the main station in Valdez rather than here? But it seemed really nicer. I was visited a few years ago by Christina Hoffman from the Prince William Sound Science Center, and Tara Reamer from the Sea Life Center. They wanted to have a discussion about the concern they had and the opportunities that they thought, and they were wondering if our citizens' foundation would consider helping them, both with our influence and our money. And I listened. What they told me about was the EVOs Fund. I was vaguely aware of it because a number of years earlier, I worked at the Cora Jopa Center project, and I remembered there was funding that came from that source. But I really didn't know much about it, why it was there, and certainly not that it had $190 million sitting in it. They explained that they were concerned about several things. The first was that the plan of the trustees was to spend down the remaining funds. Secondly, that they had a very strong need, as organizations created with EVOs funds, to have secure funding for their operations in the future, and they were concerned with the spend down, that their opportunity would be eliminated or eliminated. Third, they were very concerned with the overhead that was being charged to the funds, and that in fact, they provided us with information over time showing us that in some cases, 40 cents of every dollar being spent was being spent on administration or overfunds. Next, that money was being proposed to be spent outside the spill region. And then lastly, that they felt that there was not a level of engagement as there had been early on, so that was very difficult to get information, that there was not timely opportunity to find out how to apply for funds. They were not aware how funds were awarded, and there was definitely a lack of transparency about the process, but they thought was contrary to the original intent and how the fund worked in the early days. Rastusen Foundation is not at all expert in conservation issues, but we are pretty expert in endowment and philanthropy issues. I have served as Chair of the Alaska Children's Trust, which was a trust that sat at the Alaska Department of Revenue, managed by the Commissioner of Revenue, invested by the Alaska Permanent Fund. And what the trustees found from the first day that I arrived on the trust is that because of the fact that it was in the state, investment returns were not what they should be because of the way the funds were being invested. The application process for funds was very cumbersome, and the grants, the grant organizations they were hoping to award funds to couldn't compete. That because it was an entity of the state, other entities did not want to donate money to the fund. And fourth, it had limited visibility and very poor donor stewardship. So there was an effort to move those funds from the state of Alaska to a private entity so that there could be a much more robust organization with people who really wanted to serve rather than people who served by virtue of the position that they held, that there could be robust fundraising, donor stewardship, and that the grant-making process could be much simplified with a minimum amount of overfunds. As we looked at all the options, we ended up talking to the Alaska Community Foundation and eventually sought legislation, which took a couple of years to pass under Anna McKinnon at that time, as the Finance Chair. And legislation was passed to move the funds from the Alaska Children's Trust of the state into a fund that's also called the Alaska Children's Trust, but stewarded by the Alaska Community Foundation, invested by the Community Foundation, while maintaining all the original criteria, vision, mission of the Alaska Children's Trust. It's worked extremely well, still there today. Its size has grown exponentially, its grant-making and activities are much more robust. So I did have that experience. And when I met with Kara and Katrina, they talked about wanting to have the opportunity to get operating endowments, and that they were mindful that donors were reluctant to contribute to endowments unless they knew that those funds would be secure and the principle of those endowments would not be invaded over time. And they suggested those endowments be held at the Alaska Community Foundation. So we had some alignment in our thinking. I told them we would take a look at it and see if we could help. We first provided funding for a legal opinion. We received an opinion back basically saying it was possible to do this, and suggesting a best path forward to do so. And then, since we are not experts, we sought out colleagues, friends, did a search to find who would be a group of people that we could depend on to think this through and come up with an unbiased approach to how this could be accomplished. We, at the same time, went and visited the three members of our congressional delegation, the Governor of Alaska, Lieutenant Governor, to talk about this and see if they would have any objections in going in this direction. They were very much in favor. In fact, most of them were really pretty unaware of the fund, or how much was in it, or why it was originally formed, and what it was being used for. So with that support from our elected officials, we invited people, most of whom were very, very deeply involved in the tide of the oil spill, in the Prince William Sound and other spill communities, and asked them to take on this task as volunteers. They spent a couple of years in work groups, going through every part of it, from governance to grant-making, to endowment and so on, looking at legal ramifications, opportunities, and came up with a draft that was submitted to the EVOs trustees about two years ago. Because of the change in leadership at the state level and the change in trustees at the federal level, there have been bits and starts, and the trustees have changed over time. And we now currently have two more DECs with, excuse me, with acting trustees right at the start, two out of six. So the people we've assembled, you can see on, I don't need to read their names on the second page, but it's representative of the principal native entities in the region, representing the larger regions of Prince William Sound, Pontiac Region. Several of the people who are on the phone who have been sprouted, people that experienced some scientific research and conservation, who are fleet staff, Fran Olmer, another former Lieutenant Governor, who also had recent experience as a member of the BP Deepwater Rise and Oil Spill Commission as an appointee of President Obama. We also had the former Executive Director of the Exxon Gulf East Oil Spill and the Science Advisor, so that we have very, very deep experience on the legal issues, the mission, the original trust documents and agreements, and consent decree in informing what we came up with. And what we came up with, if you go to the next page, is a proposed solution, which is to benefit communities, people, and habitat-spilled impacted regions in perpetuity. And what I'd like to do now is turn it over to DeTredwell, take you through some of the substance of it. Need.
Thanks, Diane, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is probably about the 300th time I've had a chance to appear before the Cordoba City Council, because right after the spill in 1989, I was interviewed and hired to be the Cordoba Response Office Coordinator. Worked there in Cordoba during 89 and 90, and then became Deputy Commissioner of Environmental Conservation in the Hickel Administration, where we got the billion-dollar EVO settlement. And I just want to thank everybody in Cordoba for the wonderful things that have happened in my life because of the job I had with you. Just before I get into this, one, I really want to thank Diane for not only doing this think tank, but just to let you know, not only is there the success story that she talked about with the children's trust, but I've watched as she has brought foundations to the state from other parts of the country. She and Ed Rastusen have probably done more to build capacity for charitable giving in the state as they've been giving away money themselves. And it's just a pleasure to be working with Diane. Coming back to Cordoba, when I was working for the council, we had a number of short-term objectives. I remember my very first interview, there was a consensus in the community that you wanted a science center, and we helped get a science center. There was a consensus in the community that there were a number of other community facilities that needed to be built. And from the criminal settlement, there was some money for court development, there was some money for community facilities, and of course, from the Exxon Valdez Oil Spill Trust, we got support for the Cordoba Center where you normally meet. And I joined this think tank because I had all along, you know, if you get this kind of money, we ought to be able to find a way to have our cake and eat it too, and do it so that the money didn't disappear. And so if you turn to page five in the presentation that was sent to you, the EVOs Trustee Council, and you know, for those of you who were around at the time, Cordoba, I testified for Cordoba in a number of different lawsuits, where the city was trying to recover, you know, all of its costs from the spill. And that was a separate kind of lawsuit than the trustee council lawsuits were. Essentially, you had federal and state trustees for the natural resources that were able to sue for the damages of the natural resources, not the economic damages that many people had, but for the critters, for the land, and that sort of thing. And the $900 million settlement that was set up basically had to be unanimous, any spending out of that had to be unanimous among the six trustees. So you have three state trustees, the Commissioner of Fish and Game, the Commissioner of Environmental Conservation, the Attorney General, and three federal trustees, NOAA, the Forest Service, and the Department of Interior. And just a couple of things in light of the trustee council, you know, I give Cordoba huge credit, the group of Cordoba fishermen who went and blocked the Valdez arm, so tankers couldn't come in or out until we got the federal trustees, for example, to agree to fund the sound ecosystem assessment that helped save the hatcheries, helped bring back production from the hatcheries, and did some pretty amazing things. Lots of work was done at the Science Center with this and so forth. But the current plan with the remaining $188 million is to spend this EVOs trust down to nothing. And whatever they do, they have to have unanimous decisions, and several times, this has gone to be something that the Governor, or the President, or somebody lead in a federal administration has had to agree upon. If you go to the next slide, slide six, what the think tank came up with is three key elements of a plan that we're taking to the trustee council. One is to transfer remaining assets into a permanent endowment to be managed for the benefit of the region, its communities, and people in perpetuity. Number two is establish permanent annual endowments to critical entities that provide scientific research, cultural preservation, and human services within the spill-impacted region. And three is allocate remaining funds to competitive and transparent grant program, far more transparent than what we're seeing today with grant decisions recommended by a panel of experts from the spill-impacted region. And this would still follow the requirements and guidelines of the original trust, but it would basically give us the capability to do some things that I hope Sherry is going to be able to talk about. Let me just turn to the one part of the research settlement on slide seven that we're talking about. What we have proposed is that trustees continue to funding the current five-year research commitments, which is approximately $8 million as of fiscal year 2020. And that includes work at the Prince William Sound Science Center, it's work that has helped to try to understand what's going on with the herring fishery in Prince William Sound, some other work in keeping long-term data sets, and we supported, you know, we learned about that again and understood that and support that. We second, want to agree operating endowments to ensure that regional research organizations can continue scientific and community-focused work. And I'll go back to the direction that your predecessors on the council gave me when I worked for Cordoba, which is we worked in the Oil Pollution Act of 1990 to get funding through Ozry for the Prince William Sound Science Center. When, as Marilyn talked about, we created the Regional Citizens Advisory Committee. You know, your council predecessors pushed us to the Cordoba consensus to set up a scientific vice presidency there and make sure that the RCAC worked closely with the science community and that we were trying to get built in Prince William Sound. And later on, we pushed to get the North Pacific Research Board established. I wasn't working for Cordoba at the time, but if it hadn't been for former mayors and others pushing on that, I don't think we could have gotten the congressional delegation to win that money, but it's also been incredibly important for science in Prince William Sound. So at this point, creating a new operating endowment that helps make sure the lights stay on at the Science Center, the Alaska Sea Life Center, as two examples, we feel is very important. And then the third thing is to establish an ocean research fund at the Alaska Community Foundation, approximately $60 to $70 million that would fund ongoing work. And as you all know, you know, there are times where we may have science questions that come up. How do we restore shellfish and avatars? How do we bring back the herring fishery? What's happening with predator-prey relationships out there? And that would allow that kind of research. And I'll just tell you, because of what I learned at Cordoba, I not only went on to DEC, but later was Chair of the US Arctic Research Commission. And this kind of money, where local folks can help guide how the money is spent, is very, very, very rare. I stood with Ted Stevens in Cordoba at one point when he told us how rare it was as we set up the Ozry Fund. And this is very, very important, that we try to get this capability to grow. So those are the recommended uses for the research settlement. I'm going to turn it over to Sherry now to talk about some of the other community uses. But I just want to tell you that what Cordoba started in terms of local science, because we had the capability after the spill, has gotten really global recognition. It's one of the best science ecosystem study programs in the world. It's been recognized considerably, and I think you all should be very proud of what Cordoba's helped create. Sherry, it's up to you.
Thank you, Need. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight in understanding more about our proposal and our think tank perspective. As Need says, I'm Sherry Beretta. I'm the Chairman of the Board for Chu Dash Alaska Corporation for the past 23 years and currently serving as the interim President/CEO. I also serve on the Sea Life Board as the Treasurer. And I was on the EVOs Public Advisory Group in the early 90s when a lot of the land sales were happening, and I was opposed to those. And when I got on the Board for Chu Dash, I ensured that our land wouldn't be for sale. And subsequently, we have 242,000 acres of subsurface state that is now owned by the federal government, that we are seeking legislation to deal with because of the conflict that exists on conservation lands with subsurface that is the dominant state that came to develop. So, you know, my history with the EVOs Trustee Council has not been very favorable. And so, you know, it was easy for me to be involved in this project from, you know, I think Diane and Marilyn and all the others for stepping up. You know, when I think of the oil spill, it just, it churns my stomach. It was such a difficult time. My mother was born at Sea Life. I have a house there. I have ties to the towns. And our, you know, the oil spill were compounded by some of these nails that took place. It divided families and devastated our people, the spills, and then to have their land bought and no longer, you know, passed on to our children. That was, it's difficult. So this proposal is from the Habitat Acquisition Fund, which is about half of the funds. The idea is that because of the archaeological and historical losses that were encountered in this town during the spill from the lost native people, there were some funds that were allocated for that. And the Pontiac Region created the Othik Museum. Chu Dash Region has individual local displays, and so the one in Cordoba that he actually put together is part of that, that was part of it. And then they just took it to a whole other level that's beautiful, it's glorious. But each one of the seven communities have a local display. There was one set up in Seward for the region, but it never really took off. You probably should have put it in Valdez or Cordoba. But the idea is that these endowments to these cultural organizations will help fund those efforts that are ongoing in perpetuity. And the funds that were initially available, they completely dried up, and the process in which, you know, access to those funds could even be considered was just zero. And so this proposal not only focuses on those communities that were so affected that have not had access to the opportunities other than their land being purchased, could now deal with healing from the impact. And the creation of, and the rest of the funds would go to the Community Foundation for grants. The idea would be that it would focus on land and resource, education and engagement, local communities, fisheries vitality, human services, architecture, archaeological and cultural habitat protection. And so the concept of making it more available to the communities is at the forefront from the trustee council that currently doesn't exist and has not since, you know, since those initial funds were granted back in the early 90s to create those facilities. So on the proposal, on page eight, that kind of lines out what those tight areas are and the, you know, the benefits of a new vision for the EVOs trustee, you can see on page nine, which will be increasing the efficiency of administering funds, making it more available to our communities that were affected by this spill, increase transparency and simplicity in the grant-making applications, and then creating these perpetual endowments that will continue according to work being done in the region. So these are the, on page 10, are some of the organizations that I've already signed on. We currently have, we set up with the Prince William Sound Science Center and the Native Village of Iac. We have a reservation to ASN. And just starting to try to get the word out. And so we're glad to be meeting with you to be able to share this and see if you have questions. And so I'll finish my comments there and turn it over to Rachel.
Thank you, Sherry. And just for all of your reference, I know the packet you received was sent last week to get it in your packet. So on page 10, I have a few additions to share there. We do have public support and written support now from the Alaska State Chamber. I would love to
Help to try to understand what's going on with the Herring fishery in Prince William Sound, some other work in keeping long-term data sets. And we supported, you know, we learned about that again and understood that and support that. We seconded one decree operating endowments to ensure that regional research organizations can continue scientific and community-focused work. And I'll go back to the direction that your predecessors on the council gave me when I worked for Cordova, which is we worked in the Oil Pollution Act of 1990 to get funding through Ozry for the Prince William Sound Science Center. When, as Marilyn talked about, we created the Regional Citizens Advisory Committee. We, you know, your council predecessors pushed us to the Cordova consensus to set up a scientific vice presidency there and make sure that the RCAC worked closely with the science community and that we were trying to get built in Prince William Sound. And later on, we pushed, you know, to get the North Pacific Research Board established. I wasn't working for Cordova at the time, but if it hadn't been for former mayors and others pushing on that, I don't think we could have gotten a congressional delegation to win that money. But it's also been incredibly important for science in Prince William Sound. So at this point, creating a new operating endowment that helps make sure the lights stay on at the Science Center, the Alaska Sea Life Center, as two examples, we feel is very important. And then the third thing is to establish an ocean research fund at the Alaska Community Foundation, approximately $60 to $70 million that would fund ongoing work. And as you all know, you know, there are times where we may have science questions that come up. How do we restore shellfish and halibuts? How do we have, how do we bring back the herring fishery? What's happening with predator-prey relationships out there? And that would allow that kind of research. And I'll just tell you, because of what I learned at Cordova, I not only went on to DEC, but later was chair of the US Arctic Research Commission. And this kind of money, where local folks can help guide how the money is spent, is very, very, very rare. I stood with Ted Stevens in Cordova at one point when he told us how rare it was as we set up the Ozry Fund. And this is very, very important that we try to get this capability to grow. So those are the recommended uses for the research settlement. I'm going to turn it over to Sherry now to talk about some of the other community uses. But I just want to tell you that what Cordova started in terms of local science, because we had the capability after this bill, has gotten really global recognition. It's one of the best science ecosystem study programs in the world. It's been recognized considerably, and I think you all should be very proud of what Cordova's helped create. Sherry, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mina. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight in understanding more about our proposal and our heat tank perspective. As Mina said, I'm Sherry Goretta. I'm the chairman of the board for Chu Dash Alaska Corporation for the past 23 years and currently serving as the interim president CEO. I also serve on the Tilt Lake Board as the treasurer. And I was on the EVO's public advisory group in the early 90s when a lot of the land sales were happening, and I was opposed to those. And when I got on the board for Chu Dash, I ensured that our land wouldn't be for sale. And subsequently, we have 242,000 acres of sub-surface state that is now owned by the federal government that we are seeking legislation to deal with because of the conflict that exists on conservation lands with sub-surface that is the dominant state that came to the dollar. So, you know, my history with the EVO trustee council has not been very favorable. And so, you know, it was easy for me to be involved in this project from, you know, I think Diane and Marilyn and all the others for stepping up. You know, when I think of the oil spill, it just, it churns my stomach. It was such a difficult time. My mother was born at Tilt Lake. I have a house there. I have ties to the towns. And our, you know, our, the effects, the oil spills were compounded by some of these nails that took place. It divided families and devastated our people, the spills. And then to have their land bought and no longer, you know, passed on to our children, that was, it's difficult. So this proposal is from the Habitat Acquisition Funds, which is about half of the funds. The idea is that because of the archaeological and historical losses that were encountered in this town during this spill from the lost native people, there were some funds that were allocated for that. And the Coneyak Region created the Othik Museum. Chu Dash region has individual local displays. And so the one in Cordova that he asked for together is part of that. That was part of it. And then they just took it to a whole other level. It's beautiful, it's glorious. But each one of the seven communities have a local display. There was one set up in Seward for the region, but it never really took off. We probably should have put it in Valdez or Cordova. But the idea is that these endowments to these cultural organizations will help fund those efforts that are ongoing in perpetuity. And the funds that were initially available, they completely dried up. And the process in which, you know, access to those funds could even be considered was just zero. And so this proposal not only focuses on those communities that were so affected that have not had access to the opportunities other than their land being purchased, could now deal with healing from the impact. And the creation of, and the rest of the funds would go to the community foundations for grants. The idea would be that it would focus on land and resource, education and engagement, local community fisheries vitality, human services literature, archaeological and cultural habitat protection. And so the concept of making it more available to the communities is at the forefront. From the trustee council, it currently doesn't exist and has not since, you know, since those initial funds were granted back in the early 90s to create those facilities. So on the proposal, on page eight, that kind of lines out what those type areas are. And the, you know, the benefits of a new vision for the EVO trustee, you can see on page nine, which will be increasing the efficiency of administering funds, making it more available to our communities that were affected by this bill, increase transparency and simplicity in the grant-making applications, and then creating these perpetual endowments that will continue supporting the work being done in the region. So these are the, on page 10 are the, some of the organizations that I've already signed on. We currently have, we set up with the Prince William Sound Science Center and the Native Village of Iac. We have a resignation to ASN. And just starting to try to get the word out. And so we're glad to be meeting with you to be able to share this and see if you have questions. And so I'll finish my comments there and turn it over to Rachel.
Thank you, Sherry. And just for all of your reference, I know the packet you received was sent last week to get it in your packet. So on page 10, I have a few additions to share there. We do have public support and written support now from the Alaska State Chamber, as well as the ANXDA Regional Association. We have delivered presentations to ANXDA Village Corporation Association and have upcoming presentations this week and in the next two weeks to Prince William Sound Science Center Board, the Alaska Community Foundation Board, the Native Village of Iac. And we also gave a presentation last week to Codiak Trustee Advisory Working Group. So moving on to page 11 in your package, these are some ways, if you find yourself in support individually or as a council, of this concept for, you know, moving EVO's into perpetuity, grant opportunities for communities and for science. We definitely have ways that we are asking for support to be given to be efficient and productive for the trustee's decision-making process. As you know, we're trying to be very transparent and open with our outreach, giving presentations to any entities or groups that ask. And just open to any questions at this time. On page 12, have some ways to get in touch with us. Between pages 11 and 412, I'm happy to hear from you on this call or in the near future with any questions about our outreach or our communication, or ways to send your support. But at this time, I know we have one hour, and so it looks like there's 26 minutes left. And we really, more than anything, just value the opportunity to get to have a discussion and have some back and forth with you. So thanks to these presenters from the group, and we'd be happy to turn it over to you there.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. And on behalf of the city council, the community, thank you, think tank members for your volunteer hours and the effort you've put into looking at options and bringing those forward. And at this time, I'd like to see if there are any questions from city council, and I'll just go through in order. Councilman Baylor.
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And just for reference for city council, here in the council chambers, we have Helen Howard, city manager, Zachary with the Cordova Times, Howard Master, Chanelle, finance director Fay, and EMS, fire chief Paul Trumbly, and the clerk and myself. Are there any questions or comments, Councilman Sherman?
Well, I just made a couple of quick comments in that I have had experience working with EVO's trustee council for the Cordova Center. And I would agree that one of my frustrations was the amount of administrative costs that went, in fact, towards the trustee council rather than going to the entities that really needed and observed the funding. And I'm more than thrilled to hear the presentation and to see that we're thinking of not waiting these funds and making a break for a long time to come because we know the effects of the oil spill will continue for a very long time to come. And I wanted to compliment Sherry on her very good description of her relationship with EVO. I'm not sure I could have done it diplomatically. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gard.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of quick questions. On page seven, on section two, it talks about creating an operating endowment. I don't see any dollar amount on it. And the same way with section three on page eight, it talks about remaining funds. Just so I'm a little bit more clear on why the funds are being allocated and moved around.
And I'll just let you direct those, Rachel, to the appropriate think tank member.
Diane, would you like to speak to us?
Sure. The original proposal from the trustees, I'm sorry, from the think tank, was included also a $12 million operating endowment for Prince William Sound Science Center. However, the Science Center Board has not taken a vote on this yet. So we wanted to wait until then, but it was the intention that that organization would be one of the four that would receive those endowments.
And then section three on page eight, talks about remaining funds. What five dollars were you talking there?
And Rachel, if I could jump in. We estimate that practically half, so if the Habitat Acquisition Funds have half of the 188 and 40, that leaves another, you know, 50. That would be administered by the Alaska Community Foundation. And in the heading number three, where it says remaining funds, should go to support the following types of activities within this so affected region. So the idea would be that they would, the community foundation would administer grants to those so affected communities in these areas for other organizations to apply to.
Okay, so we have roughly 25% of the dollars being of the total available funds today. Okay. Okay, I think that answers the questions I have. Okay, thank you very much for answering my questions.
Vice Mayor Meyer.
Yes, thank you. First, I'll just do my comment and thank everybody for spending the time and hiring this effort into this presentation, trying to come up with plans for the remaining money and how that should be administered. And I also connect with Sherry on the land issue. I heard that half of David's land was out of their ownership. As a young adult, I had a lot of questions on why and where that was. So I guess my question, if you guys can, one of you can answer, is what other assets are you talking about? Can you say assets dispersed through these different things besides 188 million? Is there any other assets that you're looking to disperse to other entities as well?
The answer is, this is me, the 188 million is what the trustees continue to control. When they have bought land, for example, that land has gone into either a federal or state agency. For example, Etchimack Bay State Park or U.S. Fish and Wildlife Land, which is some of the concerns that you and Sherry have talked about. And Diane talked about what happened with the Children's Trust. I'm just going to give you an example. Several times for the Science Center and when I was in at DEC, if there was a spiller who had to pay a fine, sometimes the spiller would come back and we would agree that they could instead make a donation to build a community facility or to build a, you know, to set up a oil water separation facilities or something along those lines, or support a research program. And by setting this up in the community foundation, as Diane mentioned with the Children's Trust, it would allow on another incident or a smaller incident for mitigation funds to go in to help expand either research or community facilities, community support. So that's one other potential asset that comes out of this. There are no specific assets additionally at the trustees aside probably a few computers that I think we have to worry about.
Okay, thanks. And I did have one other question about how the current plan for EVO's trust is to send it down to zero. I guess, if any of you guys know, has that always been kind of their plan? And how long would that last? Did it stay in the current system?
Hey, Malita, this is Rachel. I believe, and I could pull this through and send you more information from actual EVO documents, but I believe it was announced or sort of developed as a concept amongst the trustees in 2011. And current send-down plan, if you will, or sunset plan would be to expire in or around 2023. There's obviously existing grant processes in place that would be honored just as odd plan honors those as well. And if any of the other folks on the call have more to add at that point, I just wanted to share some of the dates that have been discussed at the trustee's.
Does that answer?
If I could add to one thing about that, and I'll just say, you know, you worked with the Science Center to get new lands to build a larger Science Center. And I know that there's an interest at the Science Center to get money for bricks and mortar. We had all worked together on the Cordova Center. You know, I hosted a fundraiser in my home for the Cordova Center. And we do want to see the Science Center build out its building. This, the proposal that we have here would not prevent that. It would actually, I think, is supported by being able to support, say, the long-term payment of a mortgage or debt board, or it could come off the top. And that's one of the questions that I think we'll be talking about tomorrow. But knowing that, you know, we look very hard at the value of endowments versus sending it down in big blocks. And it was really our feeling that if you have endowments, we can get brick and mortar built, but this would help us keep lights on.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you all for all the time and workday that I'm in. Appreciate it.
Councilman Schaefer.
Hi, yeah. Thanks, everyone, for presenting tonight. I think I'd like to have an endowment, first total send-down so that funds could be available to help, you know, the so affected communities and then research for years to come. Because, yeah, as you stated, we're still feeling the effects on the oil spill and will be for quite a while. But I might be wrong on this, but I was under the impression that due to the consent decree and the MOA, that the trustee council is the entity that is legally responsible for dispersing the funds. So I'm wondering, in this vision that you're laying out, how you see the role of the trustee council or how you see getting around that point?
Diane, I would like to ask that?
Yes, sure. Our understanding from the legal opinions that we received, and we are hoping for additional clarification from the Department of Justice. We've just gotten a letter, but it wasn't particularly clarifying. It certainly did not say that there could not be endowments in it. Is that the trustees can take any actions simply by voting unanimously? And that if they made grants for the remaining amounts to entities such as the Community Foundation, Prince William Sound Sea Life Center, Othik Museum, and so on, that they could do that? So that's what we were looking at, this legal mechanism, a simple vote with the six trustees, voted by the Department of Justice approval, and the judge who originally approved the consent agreement. So that was supposed to be the steps.
Okay, thank you. And then another question I have is, does the ATF have experience administering and managing this volume of funding?
I can answer that to you. I served as treasurer now of the Community Foundation. I was not on the board at the time the Children's Trust moved the funds on. I've been on the last few years. Recently, the trust of the Alaska Community Foundation has approximately $150 million in it. But they also have a lot of funds that are donated in expense, so they're not all endowments. Some of them are spending funds, donor-funded funds, organization funds, and so on. So for CFO, they're in the process of distributing $40 million from the state of Alaska to care fund this funding that was granted by the Department of Health to the Alaska Community Foundation for distribution. So that is a very significant amount. They did it in the first round of funding. There were 11 days from the date of fund application to do the distribution, and it excluded three layers of expert review of each proposal. So I think that they have just recently handled an amount that would be far greater than the amount being added in with the ex-fund of these fundings. In a normal year, they would do probably an amount that would be similar to the amount for the, of the ex-fund of these funds. They received also money from the companies that exited when the two were the original investors from the Pebble Mine Project, left an endowment at the Community Foundation. They're supporting workforce development. They operate a backbone, EP, recently left the Energy Center that it operated for many years in Anchorage that's used as a nonprofit meeting center. That was just left to the Community Foundation with an endowment operating. So they felt quite a bit of experience. The Children's Trust endowment is probably, I have been not on that board for a number of years, but I guess it gives them a $15 million rate. But they also receive money that they grant out in the same year. So in terms of total grant-making, I would say it's not a big stretch for this organization. And they do volunteer panels of experts as grant review process, supported by program investigators on their staff.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
Councilman Allison.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilman Glason.
No, I don't have any questions. I just say thanks to Rachel and everybody that joined us on the phone there. That was a great presentation. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions, council?
This is Ann Schaefer.
Councilman Schaefer.
I guess I lost my question. So I'm just curious, what are your next steps or what are your timeline looking like for moving forward?
This is Rachel. I can do that quickly, but I'm sure others will have something to add. So next week, actually, are the upcoming EVO trustee meetings. Public Advisory Committee is meeting on the 13th on Tuesday, and the trustee council is meeting on the 4th. The concept of endowment and the new vision for EVO's concept will come up at both meetings. However, we won't be permitted to deliver our presentation. I was told today that we will have an opportunity to give public comments just like everyone else, so we intend to do so. But we are hopeful that some of the stakeholders who are, have already indicated their supporters, expressed their support for the concept of endowments, will also weigh into public comments. EVO, through your awareness, Councilman Schaefer, has a little bit of a different process. We do need to email the staff prior to the meeting to sign up for public comments. And so we are hoping that, you know, getting the word out on that to the stakeholders we've already spoken with will be helpful to get, solicit more community feedback there on that. And we're continuing our talks with Senator Solis' office. The Senator McCaslin office, which has been very supportive, as we saw on our list of sort of declared supporters thus far. Senator Solis' office has taken the lead on communications with the Department of Justice to try to clarify a legal opinion for path forward, should this be an option, and receives, you know, we obviously are looking for resounding support across the so impacted region. you know, we obviously are looking for resounding support across the full impacted region.
Rachel, could I add just to your thought, and, you know, I know this is a council work session, not a decision-making session, but I would really encourage the council to have the mayor or some representative of the community to speak in favor of this concept, certainly in favor of not spending down the endowment, certainly in favor of greater transparency in working with this and lowering, you know, lowering administrative costs. I would hope that those are the kinds of things that the city could stand for, because it's actually going to benefit a lot of things you're trying to do at the city. I don't think it's going to hurt you, so to speak, with, you know, some of the other ideas that people may bring up. There's, you know, some people want to talk about more mariculture. I'm a big fan of mariculture. There hasn't been a plan laid out, and frankly, research and support of mariculture is something that this endowment could certainly support. There's, but showing a community support for this, I think is, what's going to happen is there may be some different views of what legally is possible. The questions that were asked today about that are live questions. We happen to believe that it is certainly possible for the trustees to dispense with their authority by turning, you know, long-term spending over to reasonable folks who would run an endowment program, as the state did with the CARES Act on certain things, and the state did with the Children's Trust on certain things. So anyway, if there's a way to show a approach or get the trustees to take this seriously, I think it would be very, very helpful to advance this concept.
Thank you, Mead. With no objection, Manager Hemsworth has a question.
Greetings, everyone, and thank you again for presenting. There's been lots of questions around Cordoba as this concept has been floated, and I really appreciate the clarification today. I did have one question. It seems like a really good plan. I'm just wondering where the resistance is. What are the issues that people seem to be having, if there are any? As you try to garner support, it's helpful for us to understand what the issues might be that are causing folks to maybe question whether this is a good idea. Is that something that anyone's able to clarify for us?
I'll turn through the mayor, the manager. By the way, it's nice to be with you virtually. There is a group, you know, my friend from Cordoba, Rick Steiner, has always felt that most of the money should be used by Habitat. There's some folks who urge, for example, that more land out in the Berry River coal field be purchased, and, you know, the trustees, I don't think are going to go in that direction, but there's some people who would like to see more Habitat purchase. There are some people who, you know, there's a number of well-paid jobs right now of the people who run this, even though there's very little being done, and so there's some bureaucratic resistance, I guess I'd say. There's the, one of the questions that we've always had with trustee money is, should more of it go back into government agencies, or should it go out to the communities? And some of the government agencies may have their eye on certain pieces of this. So those are the kinds of things that I would expect you'll hear if you attended the trustee But no other specific opposition that I'm aware of, Diane, or Rachel, or Sherry, you may have some others, but.
Yes, this is Sherry. I just wanted to say that the effort to provide the land out in the Berry River coal fields is outside of the bill zone, and so there would take some real work to change that. And, you know, I'll tell you one thing, there are a lot of people that are eyeing this fund now, saying, oh, well, you know, we could use these funds down in La Vila or the Kenai, or, you know, and we're just thinking, the farther away it gets from the oil spill, the less people remember how devastating it was to us. And we would much rather see this money going towards the communities that are still hurting. You know, I can hear it in your voices, and I know, I feel it in my soul, and I always will, the impact. And if we can do some good with this money, I mean, there's been a lot, and I'm not taking anything away from the scientific research, because I'm sure that there's some good work there, but, you know, the communities, the people that were impacted by this bill never really got justice through the courts, and I just believe that this money could be used for better things than buying native private land and giving it back to the federal government.
Okay, thank you. So we just have about four minutes left here. Is there any additional questions, City Council? Okay, well, thank you.
Ms. Lena?
Yes, Vice Mayor Meyer.
I think I have a lot of questions that probably can be answered in four minutes, and I know I can come up with all of them. I think I first heard about this, I think, about two years ago when I did testify in front of the EVO for the Science Center, it's part of it on behalf of the City Council. And when I first heard about it, it piqued my interest, because I haven't really heard anything about it since then, so I guess I'm just intrigued about it, and I think that more information would be good. I don't know exactly what more information I need, but looking at the list of the current supporters, I think that Crowe does need to be a little bit more involved in this process. We were very impacted, we do, like all the town communities, but Crowe was hit really hard on it, and I feel like we have been somewhat separated from EVOs, or maybe not necessarily the decision-maker, I guess all ties to Crowe in some way, but I'm just intrigued to learn more about this and how we can be integrated into a major part of Cordoba, and is heavily affected from it. So, not really a question, but just intrigued to learn more. Thank you guys for the presentation.
That's a great segue, Vice Mayor Meyer. I would suggest to you and council, if you route those questions, and that's the last page here, page 12 is questions, and there's the website and email there to direct questions. I suggest if you direct those through the clerk, then she can forward those questions and then circulate the questions and answers back to all of the council, so we get the benefit of that dialogue. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Rachel, for any closing comments or suggestions.
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely, I think that as far as suggestions go, I would just ask for feedback and questions to come to us, so that we can get those out to the community and to all of you. Additionally, speaking more personally as a Crowe, and as I know Sherry speaks from the heart, as someone from Tutilis, I'm very passionate about this effort, and also very passionate about how this effort could contribute to Crowe being my hometown, and especially future fisheries vitality, cultural preservation, and so on. So any suggestions about how Crowe needs to receive information or presentation is certainly a welcome comment for me to receive, so that our group can facilitate that quickly. And then in terms of your point, Councilman Meyer, about how hard-hit Crowe was, I don't think that there's a person involved in this effort on our end that would ever disagree with that, and we want to make sure that Crowe feels very included in this dialogue moving forward, as we've been headed to do all along, but again, if there are gaps there, we want to know. And something, just as a side note, as you all might hear about, you know, the different ideas for how to use these funds, I would just encourage people to think long-term about what's possible for fisheries recovery, fisheries vitality, and mariculture through having grant-making opportunities and perpetuity through this endowment concept. So that's what got me excited about this effort, and I hope that Crowe will start to think really long-term about these funds that really do belong to them, that these funds belong to the people. So I guess from a personal note, that's my final comment, and thank you, Mayor, and council for your time.
Okay, thank you, Rachel, and think tank members again for volunteering more of your time in briefing us this evening. So I'll adjourn the work session, and we'll just.